Thank you for your patience. It's time for us to call it a session, call it to order our open session of the City of Crescent City regular meeting on this Monday, August the 7th, 2017. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Pro Tem Short?
Here.
Mayor Enscoor?
I am here. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Greenow, would you please lead us?
And again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No actions to report this evening.
All right, very good. We'll open up public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments should be directed to the entire Council. Any comments not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record, and we would ask that you would please limit your public comment to three minutes. You will also be given the opportunity for public comment on agendized items as they come up on the agenda. Do we have general public comment for the Council tonight? Seeing no general public comment, we'll close public comment and we will move on into our agenda. Our first item is a presentation for Trauma-Informed Multi-Tierred System of Support. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Up to you.
Okay, my name's Courtney Dykos. I live in Seattle, Washington, and I work for Continua Consulting Group. We're here to work this week with your community.
I'm Chris Dykos, also from Seattle, Washington, with Continua Group, here to work with your community.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, we're excited this week to offer this three-day workshop titled Foundations of a Healthy Community in Trauma-Informed Care. And to tell you a little bit about us, so, we are both experienced teachers and school administrators.
Psychologists.
Psychologists, and we've become education consultants in the last few years. We support schools, school districts, and counties in looking at what does it mean to support children who have experienced trauma or toxic stress.
Our model also is about creating a sustainable framework so that this is a sustainable practice. It's not just a one-stop shop and we train. It's something that's sustainable for the community and something that can be continued for many years on. And it's a public health model is our approach. We're looking at a universal health, a public health model so that everybody receives it so everybody has an understanding of what anxiety is, what stress is, what depression is, and how to deal with that properly. And through that model, we found out through our research that students actually succeed way more once they actually have an understanding, a foundational understanding of how to deal with such stress.
So, what's really exciting about working here in this community is that you have so many community partners that are coming to our workshop this week. So, we have members of the tribal nations, we have folks coming from CASA, people coming from churches.
Human Health Services.
Health and Human Services, just looking at the list. We know that there are many different kinds of social service providers that will be joining us. So, we're really excited, first of all, to bring different community providers together, all who engage with the children of your community, the young adults of your community, to talk about how to really have an aligned approach in supporting members of the community. So, part of what we'll be doing is getting deep into what's called the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, which is research on trauma and how it impacts development. We'll get into some specifics of for children that are exposed to trauma, what that means for their neurology, especially if they're exposed to toxic stress during the early years of their life, and what that means then for how they behave in a school setting or in another community setting. Often, those of us who work with young adults and children see those behaviors and think that there's something wrong with that child, and what we want to help providers understand is that that's actually a way that that child is coping with the stress of their environment, and that there are research-based ways to help that child change their behavior to be more productive in school and in society.
At the core, we're looking at maladaptive behaviors and trying to explain what those maladaptive behaviors are doing, what purpose they serve for those children. With that, we're providing evidence-based interventions for all staff. So, for principals, psychologists, teachers, counselors, we're providing evidence-based interventions that are proven to work and will be a sustainable practice for your community.
And what we look forward to, like we said, is that these are practices that can be used not just in the school setting, they can be used in the foster care setting, they can be used in the counseling setting, after-school providers. There are a lot of places where if we use research-based approaches, we can ensure that children have a consistent approach, consistent language. So, part of what we'll do over the course of the three days is help practitioners learn strategies and then think about how they're going to apply them in their own job, work environment. We're going to give them time and support to plan for that so they walk away from the three days with the specific ways that they want to help address the needs of the community and the kids.
And with this approach, we believe the long-term result will be that you'll see reduction in alcoholism, you'll see reduction in spousal abuse, you'll see reduction in many of the maladaptive behaviors that carry on throughout adulthood when there's no intervention.
So, that's pretty basic summary of what we hope to do. We have another member of our consultancy who arrives late tonight. He focuses on culturally responsive practice, so he'll be helping the practitioners really think about how do we include all the cultures of the children and the adults that we serve. We plan to do some activities with a very diverse group that's in front of us to really learn more about the culture of your community, the cultures of your community, and how those of us as adults who work with kids can better include those perspectives when we're working with kids. And we also hope to help all the practitioners think about not only the social and emotional needs of children, but their own needs themselves. And so, what does it mean to deal with stress and be a resilient adult? How do we take on work-life balance in such a way that we show up well for our constituents on a regular basis? And we'll be engaging in that and encouraging them to think about those strategies for their own lives as well.
All right. Do we have any questions from Council?
I think it's probably self-explanatory, but the term toxic stress.
Yes.
May be due to some people and for the benefit of people that are listening in.
Sure. So, toxic stress is kind of the redefinition of what we refer to as trauma. And what toxic stress is, is sustained stress over a long period of time. So, that could be parental discord, so parents are fighting all the time, every day. You show up and all you hear is just arguing, fighting, fighting in your house. That's sustained toxic stress. It could also be food insecurity. So, that's also a sustained toxic stress. Your parents, you know, you're having a hard time getting a meal every day. You're wondering every day while you're at school, what, am I going to have dinner tonight? Housing insecurity also. So, where am I sleeping tonight? So, long periods of that is considered sustained toxic stress. Historically, the EPA referred to it as trauma, trauma being like a single incident. We're realizing now that this is what we refer to as trauma is sustained toxic stress. It's not just one incident.
And so, that, and that exposure over time, especially for children, means that the way that they develop looks different than a child is in an environment where they're not exposed to that toxic stress. So, that's part of what we're teaching is to understand how that impacts their behavior and their development, and then what that means to help them develop more healthy ways of behaving.
So, if you're experiencing sustained toxic stress for a long time, trying to figure out, how am I going to eat?
Right.
Well, you may be doing something that doesn't look healthy in the community, you may be stealing something, you may be trying to gain something in an inappropriate way, but you're just trying to survive. That neurological pathway is developed and that is a solution for you. What we're trying to do is say, okay, let's modify that and figure out, one, we got to address the issue that needs to be, you know, so you're healthy and happy, but then we're going to address the neurological pathway that you feel that that's inappropriate behavior of doing something inappropriate in our society.
Thank you. Questions?
No, just immense amount of gratitude for you guys coming up and doing this. I'm part of a working group through the Youth Training Academy of young people that are exploring some of these options. We met with Mr. Harris last week to talk about some of this stuff, so it's, yeah, glad that this is happening. Thank you.
I guess my question would be, the, what's the next step going to be the follow-up? Obviously, you can provide lots of information and lots of shotgun approach training in a three-day period of time.
Right.
But I would think for our care providers, our educators, being able to incorporate a completely different perspective on working with young people is going to be something that you have to figure out more than just in a three-day seminar.
Absolutely.
So, what do you anticipate as next steps?
Typically, we, when we're working with a community, we're working for at least two to three years, sometimes longer. And so, we come into this, our, the initial conversation we have with your community was, we don't want to be just a train and dash. We want to, we want to build a relationship. We want to be here for over the years to help it build. If it's going to be a sustainable model, there's no way we could do that in three days.
Right.
So, it has to be a relationship, and we have to be here over and over and again, and we're happy to come back.
Good deal.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you taking the time and letting us know what you guys are up to.
Thank you.
We look forward to the, to the ongoing building of the relationship and the ongoing better health in our community as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, we will move into our consent calendar. We have several items on the consent calendar, the regular meeting minutes from July 17th, the special council meeting minutes from July 24th, warrant claims list from July 8th through July 28th, payroll report, July 22nd to July 28th, the codification agreement with Quality Code Publishing, the MMC Mechanical Isolation Notice of Completion, and sewer refund policy, which we directed staff to present at our previous meeting. Do we have any public comment on any items on our consent calendar? Yes?
I know I can't ask questions, but I'm going to anyway. Linda Sutter County. In regards to the sewer refund, I understand why you're doing what you're doing, number eight on a consent agenda, but what I don't understand is how is it the city doesn't know where their sewers are, that people are discovering, oh, we're paying sewer and we don't even, we're connected to septic or whatever they're connected, how does that happen? I don't understand how that happens. So, now, and I understand how you can't afford to keep paying people once they find out that, oh, guess what? Well, I got to pay, I got, I get a sewer problem and then I find out I'm not connected. Now, they're not going to get their money back. So, I don't know.
Well, it's a good point, Ms. Sutter, and the reality is, is everybody has six months to figure this out. If there's anybody that has any question, and I would just say this for the public in general, if there's anybody that has any questions that says, I'm not sure if I'm hooked up to the sewer or not, all the public has to do is call City Hall, we'd be happy to help them figure that out. They've got from now to the end of the year to get this figured out, if we find people.
But, but the thing is, is that for the Jolinda recycle place, they didn't, they thought they were hooked up to the sewer, and I don't know how they discovered they weren't, but, I mean, things like, they, how is it they don't, how is it the city doesn't know where their sewer pipes are? That's all.
Well, it's a great question, and the reality is, is we can have sewer pipes someplace that there are people who are not hooked up to because it's not mandated just because there's a line. So...
Most of these, most of these ones that in the past have been out in the county and were part of the county services area.
Yeah.
And with records that weren't passed on to the city for one reason or another. And so, the hookup was the responsibility of the services area back probably 30 years ago. Jolinda found out only because they, I believe, were going to sell the property and the buyer, I guess, wanted some confirmation, and they did some testing of some sort and discovered, lo and behold, even though there was a sewer line nearby, they weren't hooked up. Jolinda, by the way, is in the county, not in the city. And far as finding out, one of the ways you can do it is hire a plumber to run a camera down through the sewer and see if it shows up in a septic tank or in a public sewer.
Okay.
It's fairly easy to determine whether they're hooked up or not.
All right. Yeah, good question. Thank you. Any other public comment regarding our consent calendar? Seeing not a close public comment, bring it back to the Council for action.
Move to approve consent with the exception of item number two, regular council minutes from July 7.
Okay, we're pulling item number two. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, pulling item number two.
Second.
I have a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscoor?
Yes. Item number two, the council meeting minutes, I think you have a correction, Pro Tem Short.
Just a couple of minor corrections. One, Ms. Scott is right after closed session. You have me listed as present on the roll call. I was not there. And then, as previously discussed on, it's on page 13 of the agenda, there's some duplicate language in, in one of the paragraphs that just needs to be deleted, that's all.
All right. Ms. Scott, do you have those notes?
I do, thank you.
All right. Any public comment on the changes that Pro Tem Short has asked for? Seeing no close public comment, bring it back then. Do I have a motion to approve consent, item number two?
So, move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscoor?
Yes, very good, thank you. We'll move on then, we have no ceremonial items. We do have a public hearing, modifications to the City of Crescent City Industrial Pretreatment Program. Mr. Young, is Mr. Ramlsberg going to bring this back to us?
Yeah, Tom will be taking the presentation.
All right.
Mayor, City Council, I'm always here for the same topics, but...
That's right.
So, this one's about, I was here, what, three weeks ago, I think, for the first reading on the ordinance, and so, tonight is the second reading. I guess to refresh, I mean, this, the purpose of this revision of the ordinance is we fundamentally shift, we allow the wastewater to, instead of a concentration limit, we go to a mass loading limit, which is important to how we utilize the plant. The second thing it does is we've taken local limit documents and put them in a standalone document because they will be revised, that's normal. That's what we're required to do with our industrial pretreatment program. And the same thing with an enforcement response plan. So, should you adopt this, there's two more items that I'll be called up here to discuss. But I guess, big picture, we did the first reading and the public, we did have one public comment, it was very positive. But what this does is it sets a framework that allows us to start capturing the off-peak in the wastewater plant during the day. You get about 2:00 in the afternoon, and you're, you're pretty heavy capacity going through the plant. But go 2:00 in the morning, not so much. So, this will allow us to, to figure out a way to restructure and use our plant to the benefit of the community, the benefit of public safety, and will allow us to find some additional revenue. So, I think it's a very, very positive thing for, for the city and the plant.
Okay.
Any questions or...
Any questions? We talked at this a couple of weeks ago, I think that, very good. Anybody have anything else? All right. Let's open it up for public comment then before we take action on this and move on to the next items. Do we have any public comment regarding ordinance 799, which is amending two other ordinances? No, close public comment then, and we'll bring it back to the Council. Our, our action is to waive by full reading and read by title only and adopt this ordinance 799 as you have within your packet. Do we have an action on behalf of the Council?
I move we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 799, an ordinance of the City of Crescent City amending ordinance number 757 as amended by ordinance number 767 by modifying provisions relating to local limits, enforcement penalty and fees, and uncodified ordinance of the City of Crescent City.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscoor?
Yes, very good, thank you. So, since we approved 799, then we have two other items. Tom, if you want to just highlight those for us?
Well, the first is, is a resolution to, which places the local limits and the maximum loadings into a standalone document that we will periodically revisit. So, what it does is establish, if you look at the document, it has the existing, the previous local limit numerical values, which we are, just for your information, under our new permit, will be embarking on, a lot of analysis and have to relook at everything in and out of the plant under our permit, so expect that table to change. But this also puts the BOD into, into another category where it's, where it establishes the maximum allowed headworks loading. And so, what that means is, what this is defining is for BOD and TSS is, this is the theoretical maximum the plant can take. It doesn't mean it can take it in the middle of the day, but in, but over, over the 24-hour period. So, what we'll do in managing the plant, especially through the industrial use program, is allocate that to industrial users as they come up through the permitting process. We'll monitor it, we'll look at it, and we'll do it conservatively so we, we fill in the utilization of the plant in a very efficient and proper way. And that's what that's doing. This is, that's the one step, the first step.
And so, by doing this, Tom, as a standalone document, then that allows us to come back and adjust this as, if, if it's mandated by our waste discharge permit or just by best practice, you're discovering this, as opposed to going back and changing the entire ordinance, we come back and, and simply address the local limits.
Exactly. We have to go through, there's a process, there's a certain technical process that we're required to go through to do it, but this puts it in a resolution process rather than modifying the core ordinance.
Okay.
And then, it's available, it'll be presented at City Hall or on the website. So, I think it's an efficiency process here as well.
All right, very good. Any public comment regarding the modification to the City Industrial Waste Pretreatment Orders and the local limits? Okay, then we'll close public comment and we'll bring it back to the Council for motion.
Move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 201728, a resolution of City Council of Crescent City establishing local limits for industrial waste discharges, authorizing the enforcement of such limits, and directing the inclusion of local limits in wastewater discharge permits.
Very good, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscoor?
Yes, very good. And the last thing then is, the other component of this is the Enforcement Response Plan. You want to highlight again for us that real quickly?
Yeah, so, the Enforcement Response Plan is, is something that is referenced in the ordinance, and it has been moved to a standalone document. And really, what the Enforcement Response Plan is, is it's a policy-type document, and the intent is that you deal with enforcement in a very uniform and proper manner, is consistent with, with all users. And it was developed based on the EPA guideline, is something, again, we're required to have. So, what this update does is it moves it out of the ordinance, and we did several things in the ordinance that relate to it. We removed it. The original ordinance had a mandatory fine for a late report, a minimum fine of $1,000, which seems inappropriate for what it was. But if you look at the Enforcement Response Plan, it's very, it's a tiered approach. There was a table, a matrix, and it's really meant to, whoever's managing the program to do it in a fair and consistent way. Has to do, is it a reoccurring issue? Did it harm the plant? You know, was it done negligently or willfully? And it goes through a whole tier and it's sort of a ramped up. And the goal of it is not to generate revenue. The goal of it is, is to make, you know, to make our system safer, to make it, you know, to protect public health in the community, and, you know, nudge people, make, get people to do the right things. So, tiered approach, very consistent required. It's been looked at by our auditors, by the regulatory agencies, so it's basically based on that comment and review, another thing we have to have, so...
Okay, any questions?
So, are we reaching out to the businesses that are actually going to utilize this and be sure that they're not going to be in, out of compliance?
Yes, and maybe for clarification, this Enforcement Response Plan only pertains to, this is for the industrial users, this is a, and it's, we're talking a handful of people. Yes, through the noticing on this process, they receive the information on this. In fact, I think, you know, the thing we were, one of the things that we were trying to do is make sure it was consistent, but get rid of a requirement that looked kind of, you know, somebody is one day late on a report, it requires us to find them, and that, that is, did not make sense, and it was not consistent with the objective. So, yes, they've been brought in the loop and they were made, you know, they were mailed the packages, but it's a small group of, it's just the industrial folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just, my, my comment would be, in reading over the Enforcement Response Plan, is that it appears that the goal now is, is to make sure that we are bringing everybody into compliance, not to try to establish some kind of punitive... not to try to establish some kind of punitive punishment for people who aren't, which I think the old plan sort of was heavy-handed and felt more punitive. And this seems to be, how do we help you come into compliance so that we can make the maximum use of our plan?
Yeah, I would hope, and I appreciate that comment, I hope that's the case. Because I think what we want to do here is, we want to have a cooperative effort between the wastewater facility, the city, and in the business community, and work together and do a lot of communication, and make it work for the benefit of our community. And that's the business, that's the health and safety, the environment, all of those things as the customer, so yes.
Very good, thank you. All right, do we have any public comment regarding the industrial pretreatment program enforcement response plan? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment, and bring it back to council for action on this resolution.
Move we adopt resolution 201729, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City approving the Crescent City Industrial Pretreatment Program Enforcement Response Plan.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor and Score.
Yes, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
All right, good work.
That's all I have.
All right, good work. Okay, our next item on the agenda is Harding Avenue status update. I do not see Mr. Weir, so.
I get to stand in tonight.
You get to stand in, very good. We don't let you do it from your seat, but.
I know, if you're standing up. I have some pictures to show.
Oh, you have pictures to show, well, there you go, very good.
I have a little mouse here to, I think we're all familiar with it, the emergency that we had with the failing of the culvert on Harding Avenue, and the threat to the sewer line and water line. And gone through this a number of times, reestablishing the emergency council meeting after council meeting. And we're finally to the point, I guess I get the nice job of coming in and saying it's all done now. The road's open, and, it was under budget, not quite as much as had been hoped for because some of the costs previously included the construction, it didn't include the monitoring costs, the permitting costs that were associated with it. It went overboard, in some sense, to make sure that everything was covered properly during this, including hiring a biologist to monitor all the work during the construction, that there would be no damage. So we'll run through some quick pictures, just recap this whole thing. There was when we first started, closing it because of the failure. There is when we had the crew come in, because the water line was built, made out of asbestos cement. It was a popular material back a number of years ago. And while it's safe in the water system, when you have to cut it apart, you have to be very careful, had to hire a team trained in handling hazardous material to do it. And that was, there they are, cutting in, and of course later reestablishing the water line. There is the manhole, I think that was the storm drain manhole that was over, that was before we first discovered the failure. You probably saw that picture, they had some wet material there, and they had to bring another excavator in to pull that guy out. Those things weigh something in the order of magnitude of, oh, 70,000 to 120,000 pounds, depending upon the size excavator. That was probably one of the smaller guys, probably about the 70-pounder, 70,000-pounder. There's a couple excavators excavating the trench forward and down the lower left, near center. You can see the culvert pipe is being laid, probably about halfway through there. That work, by the way, the excavation work is being done by the County Road Department under the agreement between the city and the county for that. And have to really extend our thanks and appreciation to the County Road Department for their work, their willingness to do this for us, and the way in which they got onto it and took care of it. There's part of the old culvert, they were pulling it out. Some of that, of course, was crushed in the process of taking it out. It didn't look like, some of it looked like that before it came out. Here, they've got it completed, in the sense that the culvert is in, they're starting to place rock, both the larger rock for erosion control, but also the base rock, in the back fill material going into the excavation. There's a biologist down there checking everything, taking samples. And I don't know what all they're doing, but making sure that we're not doing anything improper, and also recording it, and ultimately filing the reports to the fact that we took care in maintaining the stream and did not destroy any of the stream habitat. And that, like, we added a little bit. We got it done because we shortened the culvert. There is the inlet to the culvert. This would be on the north side of Harding Avenue. There, there is the sewer line now being reestablished, back the pressure line. This pressure line, should mention it was a 10-inch line, and it goes from a pump station on Oregon Avenue and Coolidge over to El Dorado. And it basically handles all the wastewater from the area, essentially north of Washington Boulevard. It picks up some areas a little bit south of it, but it picks up a big portion of the county services area, particularly up in the Washington Park area. So it's the largest pump station in the whole sewer system, the city and county sewer system. And that was really tricky bypassing that, which we didn't show any pictures of that, because even trying to bypass it, we had a belly in the line, which is the way it was built, and pump. But we had something like around 12,000 gallons of sewage that we had to get out of that line that couldn't be just pumped out. I mean, because once we turned the pumps out, it stayed in the little part of it. And that was a tricky element. We had some fun trying to plan that. There's the County Road Department preparing the roadbed, getting it ready for reconstruction of the street. They're there, setting up on the curb forms at the top. Through the picture, you can see the forms, a gentleman's standing there, one of the workers. There's the other side being trenched out prior to placing the curb and gutter forms. There was, oops, went too fast with formwork. There, they're paving the street, again paving it. There's one of the curb returns, that's Truman Court. So we're looking north from Harding into that cul-de-sac just before you get to where the culvert's located. There's our finished product. This is from the, about the city limits line, just a little outside to say, looking back into the city, looking east on Harding. This is turning around, looking, you know, this is the other side, doing the same thing, on the south side. This is another shot, looking at the finished road. Is that it? Nope. I think that's it. Anyway, again, I think a lot of thanks and appreciation goes to the County Road Department, County Board of Supervisors cooperating with it, the project's done. If you drive it, you'll notice that we have the curb and gutter here on, up to the state limits line. And then the curb and gutter picks up again, the school district property down about 300 feet away. County's planning in probably this next year, but soon, to tie the two together, the curb and gutter. They didn't have the funds right now, they decided to do it with some funds that they hope to get. And we'll have curb and gutter all the way through. Right now, we have a fog line that connects the curb flow line and ours over to the county. I guess that's it. Any questions? Otherwise, there's no need to take, I guess, any action, other than let you know, here's where it is.
All right, very good.
I get to bring the good news, everybody else did all the hard work.
All right, any questions, comments? All right, any public comment on Harding? All right, we will move on into new business then. Our new business, we have debt policy. And our finance director, Liz Lieber, I think, is going to come and address this.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, very exciting stuff tonight. Okay, so the item on the agenda tonight is just to present to you a draft policy and see if you have any feedback that you would like to see changed, and with the intention of bringing it back at the next council meeting for formal adoption. So I'll just kind of go through the background quickly. So what started all of this was Senate Bill 1029, which was adopted toward the end of last year. And the purpose of 1029 is to have more transparency with regard to local debt. So the policy says, or, excuse me, SB 1029 says that, beginning January 2017, anytime a city is going to take on new debt or issue bonds, we have to prepare various reports. One of those reports is to certify that we have adopted a debt policy, and that whatever debt we are about to take on complies with the policy that we adopted. There are a few items that have to be included in this policy. The policy has to describe the purposes for which debts may be used, the type of debt that may be used, the relationship of debt to our capital improvement program or budgets, our policy goals, and our internal controls. Now, SB 1029 does not say what these purposes and policies and controls have to be, just that we have to have a policy that says what they are. So to develop this draft policy that's before you tonight, we pulled information from the Government Finance Officers Association, the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, as well as policies that have been adopted by other California cities since the passage of this. The draft that's before you tonight is basically pulling together all of the best practices from those sources. It is a fairly conservative approach with regard to debt, sort of working on the assumption that, in general, we want to keep our debt low. And in general, we want to keep our debt costs as low as possible. Also, the intent of this policy is to comply with all the relevant laws, as far as the IRS, the SEC, but also to provide flexibility. So, this draft policy provides some goals and a framework for how to make decisions. But the most important thing about this policy is that every single time the city decides to take on any debt, it has to come to the council for approval. So a lot of what this policy talks about is, here are the items that we will look at, here are the things that we will research and discuss. It doesn't necessarily say we will always make a decision X, Y, Z. It's, here are the things that are important to know, here are the things that are important to consider. And then council will adopt or not adopt debt on a case-by-case basis. So the draft has been provided in your packet. I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights of it. So what we are saying would be the objectives of any debt that the city takes on would be to provide for infrastructure and capital projects. One of our objectives would be to minimize our debt service and issuance costs, meaning the cost of, say, issuing bonds. There's a lot of costs upfront involved in that, we would want to keep that as low as possible. We would want to keep our interest costs as low as possible. We would want to maintain access to cost-effective borrowing, basically meaning we don't want to take actions that prevent us from taking on debt in the future that could be beneficial. So just like if you have a personal credit card, you don't want to run your balance up, right? Because that could stop you from doing something that you want to do in the future. So basically, we need to always be thinking ahead. You know, if we do a specific action now, how is it going to affect us 10, 20 years down the road? We want to protect the city's fiscal position and our creditworthiness, that's kind of like your personal credit score. We want to ensure flexibility so that if there was any emergency that came up, or say, a sudden change in the economy, or a sudden need, that the council would have the flexibility it needs to make the appropriate decisions. Obviously, we want to have full and complete financial disclosure, that's legally required, and it's also just a good practice, and of course, to comply with all state and federal laws. So anytime we have, excuse me, anytime we have a major project, there are lots of different ways that it could be funded. First, of course, is cash. We maintain cash reserves for a reason. As part of cash purchasing, we also actively seek out grant funding for lots of projects, as you know. We have the option of interfund borrowing. If one fund has surplus cash and another fund needs it, we have the option of setting up a loan between the two funds. There are bank loans and lines of credit, which the city doesn't typically use, has not used. They typically have higher interest rates, but it is an option if we needed to use that. There are other loans and lease programs, such as the State Revolving Fund. There are bonds, which the city does not currently have any outstanding bonds, but that is an option. Anticipation notes, basically bonds that are issued short-term because either tax revenue or a grant or something is coming, but we need cash immediately to, say, get a project started. There's also conduit financing. Again, not something that the city has typically been involved in, but it's an option. That's where a third party needs funding to do some kind of a project that is also beneficial for the city. And the city could act as a conduit to arrange financing for that. So the purposes for debt, if it's long-term debt, it would pretty much be for capital improvements, facilities, equipment, or land. Long-term debt would not be appropriate for routine operating costs. We could look at refinancing existing debt, for example, if there were going to be savings on an interest rate. For short-term debt, basically short-lived capital projects, like leasing a truck, or the anticipation notes that I discussed about, you know, needing cash immediately to get a project started when you've got grant or tax revenues coming. Lines of credit could be established through a banking institution if we needed to help with a cash flow or with an emergency. But again, those are not typical for us. So this policy does establish certain conditions for long-term debt. Every issuance of long-term debt would have to be approved by the city council. We would have to have sufficient revenues projected to repay the debt. We would look at making sure that there's not an unreasonable burden on the city or the residents. And again, that long-term debt would not be issued for current operating costs. Our policy goals would be that any debt that we take on should be compatible with our long-term capital plans. That we need to keep in mind our long-term financial planning and maintain appropriate reserves. That we would stay informed of and implement the best practices in management and budgeting and governance. That we would use conservative financing methods. We would comply with all laws. And our refinancing savings target would be at least 3%. What that means is, typically, if you have outstanding bonds and you choose to refinance them, in many cases, you are only allowed to do that once. So if you're not going to save at least 3%, you're kind of wasting your time. So for every debt issuance, we would assemble a financing team. And it would be different for each project, just depending on the needs of the project. Typically, it would be city manager, finance director, a department head, if that department was involved in the project, and consultants on an as-needed basis. And you would need different consultants, depending on what type of debt you're talking about. When we need to hire a consultant, typically that would be done through a request for proposals. We would have to ensure that the consultant didn't have any conflict of interest. And we would look at what they have for their compensation structure. One of the issues is that consultants are sometimes paid on a flat-rate basis, but sometimes they request to be paid as a percentage of the debt that's being issued. And typically, that's not recommended, just because that sort of gives them an incentive to have us take on more debt than maybe we need. So if we were to issue debt, we would look at the term of the debt, meaning the number of years to repay. of years to repay, should not typically be longer than the useful life of the asset that we're financing. You don't want to be paying for something after you can't use it anymore. If there's a specific tax measure that is slotted to repay the debt, the debt should not last longer than the tax measure lasts. We would typically prefer level payment and fixed interest because that helps us plan, plan ahead, although again, any of this could be looked at on a case-by-case basis. A call option, when you issue bonds, you can, say you're issuing a 30-year bond, you can attach to that a call option, meaning that if the city decided it was in our best interest, we could immediately repay them at, say, five years, or 10 years, or 15 years, if that was good for us, like say, interest rates dropped, or we had sudden inflow of cash and we wanted to pay this debt off. That would also be on a case-by-case basis because you typically have to pay higher interest rates to get that attached to your bond, so you have to look at whether paying the higher interest rate is offset by the potential value of that call option. One thing that is important to know is that this debt policy sets up some limitations for how much debt to take on, on a fund-by-fund basis. So any debt, and again, these are based on the sort of conservative best practices. Any debt that's going to be repaid through property tax should not be more than 15% of the annual property tax. Debt that's going to be paid out of the general fund, the annual payment shouldn't be more than 5% of annual general fund revenues. That's just considered a best practice. And for an enterprise fund, you should have a debt service coverage of about 1.2 or better. What that means is that you take your operating revenues minus your operating expenses, that's your coverage. That should be at least 1.2 times your annual payment, meaning you can make your payment and still have a little bit left over for things that crop up. There are several additional considerations that are listed in the debt policy. I've already highlighted the ones that I thought were most important for your consideration, but just to kind of briefly run through them. Investment of bond proceeds, so when you issue bonds, you get the cash right away. You don't necessarily want to just leave it sitting in your checking account while you wait to build whatever it is that you're building, so those typically get invested. And the policy has some internal controls for how that would happen to make sure that those proceeds are invested properly. Arbitrage rebate, if you invest the proceeds and you earn a higher interest rate than the interest rate that you're paying on the bonds, you may owe that money to the federal government, so we have to keep track of that. Credit enhancement, those are things that we could spend money on to improve basically our credit rating, and again, those would be on a case-by-case basis. It talks about the method of issuance, not really recommending one over another, just describing what the different methods are and that it would come to the council on a case-by-case basis. And we discussed the internal controls and maintaining relationships with rating agencies and investors to ensure that we are being transparent and keeping positive relationships for the future. Okay, so that's a lot of fairly dry material, but I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Questions?
Questions?
No, you're not getting off that easy. I'm sorry. I have several.
I knew it would be you.
Yeah, of course you did. And I'll just give you point number within the policy, some questions, I have 2.3 under interfund borrowing. My question is, if interfund borrowing on a short-term basis is not going to require council approval, I would think that it would be appropriate to define what limits that could be and what timeframe is short-term. Short-term could mean a lot of different things. So if the council is going to cede authority to staff to move funds from one fund to the other on a short-term basis, I'd like to know what kind of timeframe are we talking about? And also, is there a maximum amount of money that we want staff to have the authority to move between funds without council approval? And I don't know what best practice on any of those things are, but that's one of the questions that I have. And if this is going to be controlled by staff for short-term interfund borrowing, will there be a staff policy that will be established so that the person that follows the staff that's there now understands this is how this is done if we're going to do short-term interfund borrowing? I would think that there would be, you know, maybe just an operations procedural manual thing that we put that in, and I think that would be of value. The second is under 3.1, under long-term debt, and you had it in your PowerPoint. I don't, I'm not sure that I know what unreasonable burden means. To me, that is a, unreasonable burden could mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and so I would just suggest that we maybe communicate that a little differently. I think that, I think we address that with our debt limits and with the fact that it needs to be in line with the debt limits, but that's just a thought. Under 3.2, when we talk about short-term debt, there's a statement in here, in the third paragraph, it says, "Short-term interfund borrowing to cover cash flows is not intended to be governed by this debt policy and doesn't require city council approval." That goes back to my previous statement that I think that we do need to know what does govern that. If that is an internal control policy that the financial compliance department has, and you have that someplace that you can, so that if the guy who reads all this stuff and has all these questions says, "Well, what did you use to determine the appropriateness of moving that?", you can say, "It's right here in my policy manual, Mr. Mayor." Sorry. Under 4.0, regarding capital improvement, there is a phrase in here that I think would be better restated. It says, "The city will avoid the use of debt to fund operational expenses and routine maintenance." I think within the policy, it's pretty clear that we are stating we will not use debt to fund operational expenses and routine maintenance, so avoiding and not are not the same thing to me. Avoiding means, I try not to, but gosh, if we need to borrow some money out of one fund so that we can make payroll, we'll just do it this one time.
Okay.
And I don't think that that's the intent of the policy. And then the last thing, which is what you recovered at the end, 7.5, under annual debt, our maximum, whatever it says, maximum debt limitations, I'm sorry. The statement regarding the 5% of general fund, the paragraph there says, "Annual debt services of all bond issues paid from the general fund will be restricted to no more than 5%. Would that be all debt or just bond? Is the intent that all long-term debt will be within 5% of the general fund or just bonds?"
Can we go through these one by one just to get a little?
Absolutely.
Okay. So going back to 2.3, short-term versus long-term. Typically, in the accounting world, short-term is anything a year or less. That could be defined differently if you have a preference. Typically, what this is used for in this context is, at the end of the year, if there's a fund that has a negative cash balance because the bank statement timing is slightly different from how our year-end statement is timed, we just move it and it's moved back the next day. So typically, this is a one-day interfund borrowing, but we can define that in, you know, however you choose.
Okay. That's fine. I just didn't know what that looked like, and so, and if there is a best practices of that, or if there's something that's within your operational controls of how you currently do that, I'm totally fine with that. It was just a question that I had.
No, it's a good question.
When anything says that the city council won't be making this decision, and we're talking about an unspecified amount of money for an unspecified period of time, I thought we should at least know what that time and money could be.
That's very fair. The intent of this is not to keep you in the dark, but rather to not necessarily have to get council approval for something that we only do for one day.
Sure. Absolutely. Makes perfect sense. All right. I'm good with that. Thank you.
No problem. Okay. I believe the next one, in 3.1, the unreasonable burden, do you have direction on what you would like that to say? The intent of it is just that whenever the city would enter into some kind of debt, this is something that should be discussed. That's really the intent there, not necessarily to spell out in this policy document, you know, you will not do this amount of debt, but just that this is a policy goal, this is an overall way of thinking that would be discussed each time. So if you have specific language or limitations other than what's already in here, I can certainly make additions or change the language.
I think it's stated okay, because like you say, we are talking about long-term debt that the city council will be discussing. So depending on the scenario and what we're financing, we can determine among us what an unreasonable burden is. I think we can leave that one.
All right. Good enough. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. In section 4.0.
3.2, I'm sorry. Governance of short-term interfund borrowing.
You were talking fast.
3.2. Oh, right. So the short-term interfund borrowing to cover cash flows, that goes back to the question about short-term versus long-term, so I can just state that it refers to section 2.3, which we were going to clarify as typically very short-term, but certainly not longer than a year.
Okay. And is there a best practices of limit, I mean, as far as dollar figure?
Not one that I'm aware of, although if there is something that you feel would be, you know, you're not comfortable above a certain dollar amount, we could certainly address that.
When you talk about closing the books and making these single-day transfers, what kind of amount of money are we talking about having to move?
Personally, I've seen anywhere from as little as $1,000 to a couple hundred thousand dollars. And a lot of that can be just because, for example, like if it's, say, property tax revenue that comes in twice a year, we know it's coming, we have the cash in our investment fund, but we're paying it out of our checking account, we just move it for a day.
I guess my, and I'm totally fine with that, I would just encourage you somehow, within your own policy and procedures for finance, that you establish some kind of line statement that says, "This is why this is here and this is how we do it," without changing the debt policy, but that you have someplace in print.
Sure.
Whatever your best practices are, knowing what it's generally used for.
Okay.
All right. Good. Thank you. And then 4.0 was just the word of.
Yeah, I can change that to not use instead of avoid use.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. And then was there?
The question about the debt limits and the 5% for general fund, is that only for bonds, or is that any debt against the general fund in general?
What I've seen in other cities' policies used this language, so that's what I polled, but I think it is a question that's worth thinking about. So if the intention is we don't want to overcommit the general fund, is 5% for only bonds or 5% for all debt a more reasonable limitation? I'm a finance professional, I'm very conservative, I would say all debt. But again, that's really a policy decision.
Yeah. I would be comfortable with that. I think that the likelihood of us incurring long-term debt other than bond issues is probably higher than bond issues right now, and so I think being able to have that language within our policy would be good, but.
I agree with you on the conservative approach on that one, also.
Okay. And I should point out, in the, let's see, what section? In section 1.2, under scope and authority, again, this is a policy that's intended to guide the decision-making. It does state that on a case-by-case basis, the council may choose to adopt debt that somehow does not comply with this policy for a specific reason, and that's really why each debt needs to come to you on a case-by-case basis, because there could be some circumstance that was not foreseen when we wrote this. So just want to be clear. For example, if something incredibly urgent came up and it was going to mean that we were going to be committing to 6% of general fund, you know, instead of 5%, you would have the authority to authorize that if you wanted to. So just to be clear.
Good. All right. You didn't have any questions before, did I create some for all of you? No, you're good.
No, sir. Good question.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Good work, and thank you for putting up with me. I appreciate it. All right. All these pages here. Okay. We'll move on to our agenda, Community Development Block Grant 2016. Mr. Young.
Okay. Just a little background, not really in the report that I've given to the council, but some that's not included there. On April 12th this year, the city staff and our block grant consultant conducted an audit of the human real services funds received on the various grant programs through the block grant program. And during that audit, they discovered certain violations, and as they proceeded in following up on these, some of them became a bit more serious, and eventually, this led to action wherein I issued a letter suspending the 2014 or the 14 grant, and then later terminated the 14 grant. It's still in effect, it'll be in effect until the end of this month. And so this, some of this is based on that audit, that was the first action that began where we're going. That took care of the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program. The council in October last year approved, among other projects, two activities to our rural human services, including the Harrington House and the food bank program, and the amount of, total aggregate amount of the two programs, a little over $316,000. Those contracts have not been prepared or executed, and that leaves, at this point, in light of these violations that are still being looked into, in quandary, as to what to do. And I've looked at some alternatives, and I found some of the alternatives were that, of course, one, we could just go ahead and prepare these contracts and proceed with the approval that the council had given back in October. Another one, of course, would be to rescind those and open up a process to reallocate those funds to other activities. Those other activities could be similar, namely, a domestic violence shelter and/or a food bank by possibly another entity, or other activities. Another possibility would be to continue pursuing resolution of the violations and then go fall back a number one or two until they were either resolved or not resolved. One other factor that comes into play is that the money must be spent by October 2/19, which is approximately two years from now, and some of these activities we need to begin fairly soon if that money is to be spent during that time period, and particularly in light if there was a change, because any change will probably take three to four months in getting state approval, if that becomes necessary, depending on what activities there may be, and executing the contracts and the like with whoever the recipient may be. The first alternative runs a very real risk of jeopardizing. The first alternative runs a very real risk of jeopardizing the city's entire community block grant program. If we just ignore what has happened, we've attempted to act what we feel reasonably, because these contracts are actually also between the state and the city, and the city, state looks to the city to enforce those same regulations that they have upon any sub-receipients that we pass the money on through to, and so violation by them is same as a violation by us. The exception, of course, is if we act expeditiously and reasonably to take correction. And in that light, today, we received an email from Housing Community Development stating, and I'll quote, "If CBDG funds were used to pay the executive director's salary during the time the violations were occurring, that could be an issue of compliance with the block grant program." So it's sort of a, I see it as sort of a warning shot across the bow that something, something needs to be done. So I can't really in good conscience say that we can just proceed with the execution of those contracts. The second alternative will take, as I mentioned a moment ago, probably three to four months to do, we'd have to hold a public hearing, from the public hearing, we would have to potentially amend our contract with the state, and, and of course, enter into contracts with whoever the new sub-recipient or sub-recipient would be, all of which would probably place us to the end of this year, still gives us the approximate 20 months until which the monies could be spent, but we don't want to give up too much time. The third alternative, just waste time, in my opinion, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't, we can continue, the violations we're going to have to continue to look into. For example, the 14 contract, even though it has been terminated, that doesn't mean that every, all the paperwork goes away, reporting that was due under the original agreement is still required, and we still have to make, do our reporting on to the state concerning that. I mentioned the fourth alternative just in light, because I, one of these always look at alternatives and that's just to let it go, and that would be totally irresponsible. To me, the one that makes the most sense is the second alternative, to proceed with opening up the monies from the 16 contract for new projects, any projects, again, that could, and that could include the rural human services submitting their projects to, but the valuation of any grantee would include past history, and that is considered an appropriate evaluation criterion. We, at that point, when we evaluate them, we have to decide whether or not this is one we would want to, to consider in light of any issues that we've had. Firstly, I think we've, we have, over the years, just, I think I sent along, I'm seeing if I can find it here, yep, I'm not used to printing the two sides, a list of projects that have been done over just the last five years, we've received approximately $6 million in block grant money for a number of projects, some of them for cities, sewer lines, for example, the micro-enterprise, business loan study, money's gone to CASA at one time, to the senior center, to RHS, to Uncharted Shores, and the like, and you have the rest. If we fail to do anything, those rest monies are rest, it's not just the money that has been passed through to RHS, but it would also be monies that have gone elsewhere, including our own projects, we lose that, and we all lose out on it. Some of the issues, well, anyways, my recommendation would be that the, this money be considered for reallocation at a public hearing, which would be required, particularly and especially if projects other than a domestic shelter, domestic violence shelter and food bank were, were considered. Even if somebody else came forward to, with either one of those kinds of projects, we might have, we'd have to at least advise the state, we may or may not have to amend our contract with the state, but probably if we put some other project in other than one of those two, we clearly would have to amend our contract with the state, which is doable, you know, but that's where, part of where the timing would come in. We're planning the public hearing for the 17 money in two weeks, on August 21st, and I would recommend that, that those two hearings either be held concurrent, together, or sequentially one behind the other at the same time, because projects that might be presented, that for our, for your consideration for the 17, even though they might not be funded, you may not choose to fund it for the 17 project, they might be one of the ones to, to plug into the 16 program, particularly if they're one that could be implemented very quickly, and could meet the timeframe for meeting the, the funding being spent during, between now and October of 19. I guess we might as well address some of the issues that we've dealt with, because they're going to come up. As I said before, this all began with an audit in April of this year. Some of the issues, you're probably going to hear about how the funding, if RHS loses it, is going to totally destroy their programs. It's interesting, for these, most of the stuff is from their own records that we've acquired from them. The food bank program receives only 15% of the money in the 16 year from the city, a block grant, and only 16% in the 17 year, 85% is from other sources. The Harrington House, the figures are 12% for the 16 year and 14% for the 17 year, as, you know, that represents the block grant money. We've had repeatedly trying to get information, difficulty in getting it, and some of it runs inconsistent, and we've been told that the, that while we're only providing about 15%, that supposedly they are claiming that we have providing 39% on the food bank program and over 56% on the Harrington House. The, and the food bank program, where they have, in April of this year, the former executive director asked to transfer over 20% of the money that was supposed to be used supposedly for food purchases, be transferred so to personnel operations. In June of this year, they then asked for an additional 27% to be transferred from the 16, from the 14 program, from food purchases to personnel. We've been asked if they could justify why this increase, you know, to, from the functions that we thought the money was going to, namely, the purchase of food or distribution to personnel, we still haven't received any response. The reporting has indicated that, from memory figures also, that the food bank in 17 served 40% fewer households in 17 than in 16, provided 73% fewer food boxes, and yet expended 20% There's some double reporting on boxes versus meals. There's information that we've requested in several letters July 19th, we still haven't There's been, of course, no explanation for the budget adjustments that they want, and of course, I just mentioned that the, the state has indicated there could be a potential issue. That potential issue could mean that the city has to pay back the money. Those issues still need to be resolved. That these are some of the reasons why this is here, there's some of the reasons why terminated the, the 14 contract, some of the reasons why, and the staff is recommending that this monies need to be reallocated. At the public hearing process, I would feel that if RHS wishes to present their projects, they can do so, and they should be considered, but they will also be considered in light of what information we get and what response we get to some of the questions that we've had thus far. I guess that's all I have to say, and if there's any questions that I hopefully can answer.
All right, you can go to the council first, any questions for Mr. Young regarding his presentation?
If I understood you right, Mr. Young, we haven't got, looking at your July email to us, we haven't received anything from RHS as to our request?
We've received some information, yes, so it's not that we haven't received any, but there are a number of items we have not received, and thankfully, sometimes when we get responses, they open new questions.
How is? Have we received anything from CBDG referencing any of this, stating that we will, we're in, we have the possibility of losing our funding?
Just the one, the email we received today is, this came from HCD, this was not, you know, speculation our part, this is from the, our contact at HCD through our consultant, and it is the one that says that the funds have been spent, paid the salary to the executive director, that's potentially an issue, they put it. They haven't said precisely what that means, but in conversations with our consultant, that issue means potentially they would be looking through to turn the funds. Our argument immediately is that, well, we have acted responsibly from the moment we felt that there was something that had to be dealt with, and that goes back again to the April, well, date and a half, April 12th audit, and when things were picked up that appeared to be out of the ordinary, something, a myth, and have started asking for information. There's letters that date back in early May, asking for different information to try to resolve some of these, and they, they haven't been to date. So we've been active, we can't, I, I, our argument with, with HCD would be, even if monies were paid to him, you can only hold us responsible from the point we knew something about it and, and failed to do anything about it. We've been doing something about it essentially from then, as soon as we found out, we've been trying to get to the bottom of, of the issues.
Okay, have we asked them for what they require, like, a response from us? I mean, what kind of a response we, we should require of RHS?
We, yeah, we've asked for certain items, we've asked either for certain financial items, you know, explanation of monetary things, or we've asked for information concerning the sexual harassment suit, not only the one that was settled through DFEH, I guess, Department of Fair Employment and Housing, I guess, and some of that we have not received.
How is information that you receive from our annual reports or quarterly reports that we get from RHS, how is that information different than from what your investigations uncovered?
Boy, I can't.
Another way to ask this is like, how come our routine investigations into RHS didn't uncover some of these things?
I didn't, I didn't, I guess, how come what?
How come our routine investigations into RHS and how they're spending these grants, like, why didn't those reveal some of these issues?
I'm not sure if I completely heard the question or understand, but a part of our responsibility under the, our contract with the state is that we are to audit any sub-receipients, and so that was typically, we would audit every quarter, and it would be a typical accounting-type audit, taking a random sample of documents that they've checked, I think they generally take like one month out of the quarter, maybe all the timesheets in that month, and then another month they may take purchase orders, and like, and they then review how they were originated, and how they were paid, and which funds paid them, and whether or not they were eligible expenses, because some of the monies, RHS obviously operates both throughout the county, and our program is limited to the city. Any of the programs have to either be excluded in the city or have to be at least 51% in the city, and that's just their rule, that doesn't, that's not our rule, that's their rule. And, and so those are the kinds they check, but they also check things like compliance with various state and federal regulations, for example, the sexual harassment policies, equal employment opportunity, conflict of interest, and probably dozens of others that I'm not thinking of at the moment, and so some of those are, are checked if they really seem appropriate, if there's been some activity that might relate to those areas. But it's essentially a, a financial audit we're required to do. More than financial, I should say, it's a grant audit, including financial.
Yeah. I had one more question. At any point during your investigation, or I guess if we're calling it an investigation, did you feel misled?
How do I put this? Some of the information doesn't seem consistent, I'll put it that way, I don't know if it's intentional misleading, but, you know, it doesn't fit.
Okay.
Like, for example, maybe one would be, well, we need money for the, the food bank program, and yet we've got emails that say, we have one that says, quote, "We have an abundance of funds for food purchase." I don't know if that was intentional misleading, or if it was the right hand not talking to the left hand.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I know we have a number of people from the public who probably want to weigh in on this, and so I'll reserve most of my comments until I've given opportunity for public comment. I will, I will just preface this before I open up public comment, is the importance of CBDG on this community is something that we absolutely cannot take lightly. The reality is, and when you look at 2010, 12, and 14, over $2 million have been invested into community services. Many people immediately say, oh, well, you get these CBDGs to fix the sewers and do all these things, and that is true, but during the same period of time, about $3 million have been used on city projects or the pool, and $2 million has been put into this community. So we take this very seriously, and when our consultant communicates to us that, that if we do not take certain courses of action, we may find ourselves in a position not to be able to apply for future funding, we are required as stewards of the resources that are available to us as a community, and to our other community partners outside of rural human services, to ensure that we are doing our due diligence with all of this. It has been disappointing to me as mayor that in some light, the city has been cast as if it is doing something wrong, or that our intent is somehow to punish RHS. Our intent is to make sure that we have access to these monies to provide services to our community as we have done faithfully for years. $2 million, 10, 12, and 14, went into this community to provide services. So I, I just would ask, as we open up public comment, to remember that the city is trying to make sure that we continue to have access to those resources to provide services to our community as a whole. All right, I'll open up public comment, and welcome anyone, if you would please identify yourself, and whether you live in the city or the county, when you come for public comment, I'd very much appreciate it.
My name is Ron, Ronald Phillips, I am the Food and Family Director at RHS. I couldn't hear all of the statement that the interim manager, Michael Young, made. He turned away from the audience and only spoke to you, and it was, I'm a little hard hearing, so sometimes I don't have to read, I have to read lips, yeah. So, but the one I did hear is the comment that we were, had not expended all of the funds. When we budget the funding for the food bank, we put it out over 27 months, because that's what the grant is for, it's not for 24 months, it's really for 27 months, and we never know that we're going to get the next grant, as you really know. So my, when I say to him that we have, or he quoted some figures about. So my, when I say to him that we have, or he quoted some figures about us having not spent the money at a certain period of time, I think he said 16% or something along that line. I'm not sure when that was, if it was at the April audit, could have been. Well, that's, we still have five, six months to go. Now, it was true that we got a grant called California Groan from the Department of Social Services, and that money was supposed to be spent by the first of the year. That money this year from past years is, past years has been about $8,000, and that's to be spent on anything grown or sold or made in California. I take that money and try to put it right back into the community. I buy from Alexander Dairy, I buy from Rubiano's, I buy from the local, you know, Humboldt Dairy, I buy from Ocean Air Farms, anything that I can buy that's local. So we, we had to spend that money by the first of the year, which did leave us a little bit of a bundle of money to spend. Now, we still had, in a sense, nine months to spend that, whatever that amount of money, 16% less of $75,000, so. But I assure you, by the end of the month, there won't be a dime left of that $75,000. Now, so I, I can't answer any other, I won't answer for the board, that's not my position. I'm just trying to say, when I figured it out, this last grant and the new grant for $75,000, it's going to be, we're doing right now about 650 families once a month. That figures out to be about $4.26 per family that we spend the CDBG funds on providing food. Now, I don't know how you shop, but when I shop, I look for the best deal I can find and make my money stretch as far as I can. So on $4.26, you don't get to buy a lot of items. You're not buying, you know, filet mignon. You're lucky if you can even afford ground beef. So this, not having these funds coming up will really hurt RHS, not us. And contrary to what I understand, that the interim manager, Michael Young, is telling people, "RHS will not be out of business. We've been doing the food bank program for 30 years." And so it's not a program that's going to go away, it's a program that's going to reduce. And it's going to reduce in the number of hours that are being paid employees there, which is going to affect other programs. Okay? Right now, we do a, work with the Redwood Empire, yep, you want me to stop?
No, go ahead.
We work with Redwood Empire on a senior program, and we're doing 190 boxes a month just to seniors. That will go away. Chances are that Santa's workshop will go away because there's nobody there to run the program. Also, it's going to affect next year, the farmer's market, because there won't be anybody to run the program. Now, the farmer's market right now is doing 170, not 170, 70, little businesses, you know, every week. So these things, I mean, it's not just the CDBG funds, a little, 18% of my salary is derived from the CDBG funding. And I work, I work the farmer, or the CDBG funding about 15 hours a week. It takes me to, just to do that program. So it's going to hurt everybody, it's going to hurt them and what they get. I just got the order for September, it's three items. Luckily enough, I've been buying things that we can hold and I can, and hand out. So the public is not going to feel the pinch, probably for two or three months yet, because I've got enough in the store, you know, in storage and then to be able to piecemeal that out, even after the CDBG grant ends. Any question?
Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jolanda Ingram, and I'm the Program Director at the Harrington House. Okay, so today I spent a little bit of time researching the internet, and I did some Google searches to find out what other cities and other folks out there are doing. And I found out that this is a huge issue with universities nationwide, with what they're going to do with their federal funding when there's Title IX violations, such as what has been alleged here to have happened. And, and of course, the universities are struggling with this issue and what kind of policies and what kind of protocols to put into place. And I found a very interesting one in Texas, at Texas Tech University, and I downloaded it and I read through it, and I thought, "This is perfect," you know? And every entity needs to put something like this in place where it, where the alleged violations are, such as verbal, and then it, and then it goes to physical, and then it goes to, you know, some very different techniques, you know, that, that some of these perpetrators. And, and of course, we at Harrington House are pretty familiar with all the technique, techniques that these, these fellows use, and not always fellows, sometimes it's women perpetrators as well, but 95 times out of 100, it's, it's a male that's doing the harassing or the sexual harassment or the sexual assault or whatever it might be. And so the policies that I downloaded is called a Sexual Misconduct Title IX Violations Sanction Matrix. And it's very, very in-depth. And I think that we all could stand to get the training on this, to put this in place. And see, what my fear is, is that we're going to, this is a case of first impression before the city council, I believe, of, you know, where sexual harassment has gone to this level and where it's going to violate, put in jeopardy our federal funding. But I mean, again, it's happening across the nation to other people, and so we should be taking a look at what's happening, and we shouldn't overreact because this is a case of first impression. And I think that we would, would be overreacting if we did put into place some very harsh punitive actions that I believe are very heavy-handed, which is the removal of federal funding. And I don't think that the Housing and Community Development Department is going to be harsh. I don't think they're going to be punitive. I think they're going to give us a chance here in Crescent City to come up to the level of the, where the rest of the nation is at right now with, with regard to sexual harassment violations and Title IX violations. The other issue that I felt has come up that we haven't addressed is the contractual issues, which I think the attorney, Mavoris, submitted in the letter to the city just recently. And the contractual issue I'm concerned with is the release of personnel documents without having the permission of the employees to release their entire personnel file. And I think that once that issue's dealt with in the contract itself, that I think that it can cure a problem, that all of the employees would agree to, to be, to open up their personnel file if, in the case of these type of allegations in the future. So we, as employees, could actually sign a waiver when we get the job. Let's see, let's see. We have indeed amended our policies, but I don't think they're as good as Texas Tech Universities. I'd like to see us go to some model like this and see the city and all the departments go to this model as well. And there are levels of sanctions, starting with, you know, a slap on the hand, of course, then going to like probation, and then depending on the level of the misconduct and also depending on the level of whether the person is remorseful and admits the conduct. Our interim manager, he alluded to an email that I would love to see. He talked about, I heard the wording ignored the alleged violations, and I don't think that either the city or RHS has ignored the violations. I think that's a misstatement of what actually happened, in my opinion. I have looked at the salaries and what pays the salaries, but I don't want to say, make any statements about that without my fiscal director being here. And I believe that CDBG restricts any indirect costs, so it all has to be direct costs. And so admin doesn't get covered by the CDBG funding. So I'm pretty sure his salary wasn't paid for by CDBG funds. But I'm not 100% sure, so I want it, want them to run a report on that, make sure. I believe we'd be setting a very bad precedent if we overreact and make a fear-based decision because I believe that this would create a situation in which anybody who won a sexual harassment lawsuit would be able to basically close down an operation and, and close down all federal funding. And again, I don't think that the federal and the state departments are going to react in that way by pulling our funding for a case of first impression. And I believe that in my Google search, I found that as long as we're taking a good faith action, the city's taking good faith action and RHS is taking good faith action, that's the issue. And with that, I think, I, I think I have it all covered, except for the fact that he mentions that because we only get only 14% to 16% of our funding at Harrington House as CDBG, it's still critical that we get that because right now we're operating at short, short staff that I feel that there may be safety issues, you know? Really, that, that once we get down to one employee running that 9,000 square foot building, it, it's an issue. And we're, we're answering phones, we're dealing with the public, people walking in off the street, the cops calling or bringing somebody in to the facility. And we're down to one, one person every eight-hour shift, this, this is an issue. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Eli Naffa, I'm on the Board of RHS, and I was extremely disappointed to see the staff recommendation. I mean, it's totally uncalled for. We're trying to cooperate as much as possible. The only thing is the personnel portion, portion of it, and we've addressed that, we have our attorney addressing it. And as you know, and I worked for the city, you can't just all of a sudden just release someone's personnel information without their consent. But other than that, we are trying to give you everything we have, and as far as I know that we have, and if not, we're still working on getting it to you. It's, it's a partnership, the city, the county, and RHS. We're working together to help resolve some of these critical issues that our community faces. And at, at least in the past, the county and the city would basically look at the CDBG funding and determine, you know, who's going to take on which organization so that the county and the city don't do like a little bit for each, but rather the city takes care of RHS and the county takes care of something else. And up until 2011, I believe the county was, was doing RHS. But since then, the city has taken it on, and the county takes on others. At least that's how my understanding is. So in, in other words, to say this is not 51%, I think that that's not correct. Somehow, we have to provide services to everybody in the county. We can't just say, you know, "RHS is only funded with CDBG through the city, CDBG has to be, you know, 51%, and then city, and then therefore the rest of the county, you know, tough luck," something like that. Somehow, we have to work it together, whether we have to split it with the county or, or just have the city continue doing RHS as they are now and have the county continue doing the other organizations, whichever they are. I'm assuming you still do that, but we used to have several meetings where we'd sit down and we'd identify the different requests that came into both entities and then split them up to make sure that it's covered because we need to provide those services. And as several of you know, you know, working, you know, in law enforcement, you know, a lot of these issues, you know, whether it's food bank or whether it's domestic violence, you know, if these things aren't adequately addressed, they can become much more serious problems. So anyway, what I'd like to see is, you know, first of all, to let you know that RHS, as far as I'm concerned, and I've been on the board, I'm not sure if it's five or six years, something like that, I think that we are the best provider of these foods, of these services, the food bank and Harrington House with the domestic violence. And, and I'm sure, or assume that all of you have toured Harrington House and realize what a nice facility it is. And it's almost insulting to realize that maybe the city is considering like, "Okay, someone else provide these services." It took a long time for this community to put Harrington House together. That's a resource that shouldn't just be, you know, you know, very easily just ignored and says, "Okay, let's address it some other way," like putting people in hotels. You know, I mean, you go to Harrington House and there's living facilities, so they have their rooms, they have a nice living room setting, they can get together there, they have the kitchen where they can do the cooking, and then of course, they have all the services available. We have a number of various providers of services, whether it's legal services, whatever they need, that are available there in Harrington House. It's a great resource for the community, and you can't just say, "Okay, let's put them in the hotel." The other thing is the food bank. And, and as Ron is saying, I mean, you know, we're trying to survive on a minimal amount of money, you know, in order to provide these services, and Ron does a phenomenal job in, in giving these people quality food because, you know, it's needed, it's needed in our community. And unfortunately, as people go hungry, you know, they end up resorting to crime. We don't want that. And, you know, just, I mean, you know, how can I go to church and, and, you know, and then just turn my back to my fellow man and woman, you know, when, when they are in need? So as far as the food bank, and, and also the numbers that were given, like, you know, the 14, the 16%, I haven't totaled those out, but it's like putting together a puzzle. Okay? If you have 14 to 16% of the pieces of the puzzle missing, it just doesn't work. The puzzle is not, that's not right, it's not correct. So whatever those numbers are, we need every little bit of it. And as Ron has indicated, I sat in the office today and he ran the numbers through, and as far as we could tell up until now, he's spent all but about $3,000, and that will be spent in this, in this next month. So the services, we provide them in a highly effective and efficient manner. We have the facilities, meaning Harrington House and RHS, we have, we bought the building, so it's a great building that we have that, in order to provide those services for the food bank and other, other things. As far as the DH, DFEH, we've been notified by the insurance attorney that they are satisfied that RHS has completed the terms that they requested. So, so we think that that's important, and, and hopefully you'll feel that, you know, when, when we complete whatever things you are requesting, you know? Because we're, we're trying to do it, except for the personnel portion of it, and then our attorney has sent a letter to you saying that we provided the city with all requested actions, except those that are the personnel issues. And if we can get waiver forms from several of the employees, then we can provide that to you also. It's just that we don't want to do it against the law and against their wishes. So as far as I'm concerned, we've done everything feasibly possible to comply with the city's request, except for the personnel portion, and then the attorney's addressing that. So hopefully, we can get through all of this together. I don't know if you have any questions? Yeah, thank you for allowing me the time to.
Thank you.
To address it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I will caution you, when we bring it back for deliberation, I'm not going to open back up public comment based on any discussion with the council. So if you would like to share, you need to take the opportunity, and please do so now. Yes, Mr.?
When I first heard about this, I was livid, because I blind city council. But then I started, after I started getting information, I discovered that I think the board members of RHS are the issue. You got, you have assets to protect as city council members. And yes, the food bank and the Harrington House are essential programs that we need. But I was told by RHS employee that RHS didn't depend upon the CDBG fund for the food bank, that they had other resources. Now, I don't know if that is the same for the Harrington House, but in any case, you guys have hard decisions. I wouldn't let us sit in your shoes. But I back you 100% if you decide that, you know, it's not just about the sexual harassment, because that thing can be forgiven. It's about the numbers and the failed audit, and you cannot afford to lose the city money. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to the council for discussion regarding the interim city managers' report and recommendations. So who wants to chime in first? Mr. Follman?
I guess I'll, yeah. Well, I'd just like to start off by saying, you know, I definitely don't appreciate claims that have gone around that we're trying to take services away from the community. The experiences of people that need those experiences are my experiences. Members of my own family struggle with food insecurity. I've been in the home as members of my family are experiencing domestic violence. The services that Rural Human Services offers are ones that I know from personal experience as a poor person in this community are essential to this community. So is everything else that CDBG offers to the city, though. We can't afford to lose anything else just because, you know, of this controversy that's come up.
Okay. Councilmember Greenow?
I wonder if we need to look into this a little further before we make this decision to make sure that all, we have all the facts. It seems like there's a disconnect between what we see and what RHS sees. So I wonder if we can do a little more research and come up with something that's a little closer to what both sides see. I don't believe that we should be throwing the baby out with the bathwater, but I do believe that we need to protect these funds at the same time. So I think that we need to look into this a little further, in my opinion.
Okay. Coach, I'm sure.
I just wanted to remind the folks that our first comments, when this problem first came to light, our first comments as a council was that we did not want to take the funds away from the people that are in need because of the actions of one person. So we opted at that time to continue with the payment of the CDBG funds. It wasn't until we talked to our consultant that we were advised that if you do that, you may put yourself into a position of becoming ineligible to receive CDBG funds completely. That, as you said earlier, was a place that we cannot afford to be. So it was not a, how you could say, knee-jerk reaction or, I'm sorry, Jelani, you used the term a fear-based decision. We took the advice of a consultant that was the CDBG, I guess you could call her our expert, and then based our decision on that advice, because we couldn't afford to lose that tremendous opportunity to receive the funds for our community. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. There is some misinformation out there, like Mr. Follman said, we got correspondence from a constituent that wholly misunderstands the situation. This person was chastising the council because we basically took the money out of the needy population's hands and put it directly into the city's budget, and we're going to use it on repairs throughout the city. That's just not true. So with that clarification, I do have a few questions for Mr. Young. Mike, what are we still waiting for? From RHS, what are we still waiting for?
Guess I can remember to turn this thing off. Summary of results of the investigation performed by the contracted investigator. Copy of the corrective action plan. Proof or evidence that the corrective action plan has been implemented. Status of the current workers' compensation claim made by another person. A copy of the most recent DFEH claim. Details of the current recruitment process for the new executive director. Steps to hire and the status of those efforts. Those are the main ones. I know that there are some accounting types that seem to change you from day to day, but I don't have those listed. These are taken from the July 19th letter, letters, one for the Harrington House and one for the food bank. Both of them have essentially the same, so there's some duplication, you know, but it's the same, the same issue. The reason we focused on that, but we have gotten also into the financial, is that's been probably the big issue. They say that the DFEH is satisfied. Oh, I'd be satisfied, too, if I got $152,000, you know, they settled the claim. And we want some information about that. It appears that the violations occurred, appears that no action was taken, it went for over a year, and they finally had to file suit in a superior court, and they settled the claim, apparently a no-fault type settlement, you know, but I think that's typical, and monies were paid. We're not sure even where the monies came from, other than the insurance company, but the deductible, where that came from.
So, Mr. Young, what, is this, these items that you were saying that we're still waiting for, is, are those items, does Lori Adams say that we have to have those items to make us continually eligible to receive?
Those would be information from which we would then be able to further determine whether we would be able to leave RHS eligible or not. For example, if there were the violations and repeated violations that were essentially ignored based on the investigation, that'd probably make them ineligible. If they acted properly, expeditiously, and appropriately, nobody, other than making verbal claims to that effect, but yet, all the other information belies those statements, that'd be a different story. But, you know, the stories aren't coming together properly, you know. We're being told that they did act appropriately, but yet, then why do you settle the claim the way you do? Their own minutes don't tell that story. The fact that the alleged incident occurred back over, close to two years ago, and was reported, and yet, there's no action until, for over a year. There's no explanation of why, no explanation other than, trust me, here's what happened. You know, well, I'm afraid we need more than that. The fact that they expressed the opinion, and this gets away from your question, that they don't think that the state and fed will withhold their money, I'm not willing to sit here and suggest to you that you proceed with RHS on the idea of somebody's opinion that they might not do it, you know? I'd like to hear from the state and fed directly, saying that they won't do it, you know? I'd like to think they wouldn't, but, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to risk them over $1 million a year on that, on somebody's opinion.
Well, if we thought that they wouldn't, that'd make this decision a lot easier.
Yeah, but one of the things I think we all ask is that I've looked at here, I would agree that they have provided us with a sexual harassment policy that they have recently adopted, I believe, but they have no evidence that they are implementing it. I mean, it's fine to have the policy, but you don't do implement it. What good does it do?
Is that policy adequate as far as?
I don't know, I haven't researched. I would say on the surface, quick review, probably yes. If it wasn't completely, would probably be minor changes.
So have they submitted any material that is not adequate in the view of our consultant from CDBG?
I guess it's more a case of not submitting information, rather than submitting that's inadequate, although there's been some information, I would say not so much related to the sexual harassment, as some of the use of funds, that required more explanation, is probably the best way of putting it. It wasn't adequate in that sense, but we needed more explanation, and we were waiting for some of that.
I was just trying to eliminate some possible confusion between the city and RHS that I just could have been there, like, hey, we submitted that, but it wasn't good enough, and then they didn't know. I didn't know if that possibility was there or not, but I think I understand what's going And that is all for me, sir.
Oh, I might, that's one of the things, a couple of comments I would like to mention about the, I think Mr. Naffa mentioned about the 51% in serving the community. And I wouldn't disagree with that. I think, I'm talking philosophically for the moment, it would be nice to submit, this is a community, Crescent City, whether you live inside the city limits or outside the city limits, the 51% is not our rule. I said that earlier. It's their rule. And see, block around people, that's one of the things that we have to show, is that the service is going to city residents, or at least 51% city residents, whether we like it or not. Even if we would like to be able to serve the whole community or even the whole county, that's not the way, that's not the rule they set. The rule they set, it's got to be 51% or better in the city.
Thank you for clarifying that. Again, I want to reiterate something that has been spoken already, and that is, I don't believe that this, the city discounts the value of RHS. The implication that somehow we do not support RHS or its programs is simply a, if we want to talk about a fear-based reaction, that's what that is. We do support, or we would not have put thousands upon thousands of dollars into RHS year after year. I will also say, the city did not create this controversy, but the city must deal with it. And frankly, I am disappointed that somehow we are being cast as the bad person in this. I realize that the staff of RHS does a fantastic job with limited resources and impacts this community greatly. But you know what? Our city's staff works with limited resources and impacts this community greatly every day, too. We should look at all of this and be very fair with our assessments of one another. And I don't think that that's happening, and that disappoints me, that the city is somehow being cast in a disparaging light in the midst of a controversy that we did not create. I also realize that RHS is faced with a very difficult dilemma that may have, in fact, been created by a single individual, and that's not your fault. But it is your problem, not ours, until it becomes our problem, which is why we're trying to discuss this. This is difficult. I would simply ask, if we are going to hit pause and not take action tonight, that RHS, both its board and its employees, needs to come back to the table with the city with a little bit more of a conciliatory tone and not make accusations towards us. I think that that's very unfair. And I'm sorry, but as mayor of this city and a person who was elected to represent the people of this city, I'm going to speak my mind, and my mind says, please do not cast us in a negative light when we have done our very best to represent our community and be good stewards of the resources that are given to us. I'm not pleased. But I'm also not a person who is unwilling to give people the greatest opportunity possible to work to a positive solution. Everybody on this council and our staff can tell you that I have been, from the very beginning of this, one who has championed looking for a path forward for RHS to receive funding. Unfortunately, that may not be possible, and that may not be something I can control or this council can control. But what we can do is, we are here every two weeks. What we can do is, we can hit pause again, and we can say, you got two weeks, come back to the table, work with us, try to find out whether or not we can address every concern. If we cannot do that, then we owe it to the other service providers in this community the opportunity to apply to use those 2016 funds. The clock has started. Those funds have to be expended by October of 2019. Here we are, it's August of 2017. It's going to take time even for anybody to make application, if it's not RHS. It's going to, there's a process involved with all this. We'll have to get the state to sign off on it. And so I'm willing to follow the lead of Councilmember Greenow and say, let's make sure we've done all of our due diligence. But I'm also going to speak on behalf of the city that I serve and say, if what you want to do is point the finger at us, then we will find another partner that will serve this community, just as you have. And you've done a darn good job of it. And I don't say that lightly. And most of you know me and know my attitude about people. But at some point in time, we have a responsibility to this city to move forward, and we have a responsibility to this community to provide services with these funds. And the idea of losing these funds, $300,000, and just sending it back, and nobody getting the services that they deserve, is unacceptable to me. So I'm willing to step back, but I'm not going to step back indefinitely. And I'm not going to do so if we, if the city is going to continue to be disparaged. If that's the response that is going to come from this community, then we need to move on with another partner. So my recommendation to the council would be that we direct staff to continue the investigation and to continue to work with RHS to look for a path forward for continued funding for the 2016 CBDG grant and bring it back to us on August 21st. That's my recommendation. I don't know if we need any specific motion or if consensus is sufficient for that, council?
I think consensus direction is sufficient.
Okay.
Answer the questions, please. Two weeks.
Mr. Follman?
Yeah. Answer the questions, and I don't want to see a letter to the editor or anything about
I'm not taking this lightly, judging from what Ron said. Just senior box lunches alone, what'd you say, 190, Ron?
Seniors.
190 seniors. Every day will not get their box lunch, the farther we push this out. So?
Once a month.
190 lunches. Is that?
A month.
A month? Every, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Every day. I mean, every month. I mean, every month. 190 boxes a month is what we're potentially pushing out. So my point is-
But those are not in jeopardy right now. Those would be in the jeopardy, that would, those would be in jeopardy going forward, like next year, if you don't get the funding. Nobody's going to, nobody's not going to get their box next week. Okay. Yeah. Just because we, we won't be able to get it into the record. Could you come up here, please? Thank you. Because if there's, the reason is, is if there's a specific question that we need to direct staff back to, it just helps if we can make sure we get it recorded.
If you're going to continue, let's, let's, when it comes to Food Bank, I'm not speaking for anything else, that we know what his concerns are.
Okay.
Okay? He mentioned 51%, and yet ninety, out of the, this year, out of the 1,136, 1,136 applicants, 960 were within the city.
Okay.
Okay? That's a lot more than 51%.
Sure. And that's the, and that's, the comment was simply mean, that's the requirement, we can't do anything about it.
Right. But I don't want to comment that, that that's what the base is when really there is-
If we're meeting that, then that's not an issue.
Right. So, but if, but I couldn't hear all of the questions, or the statements he was making, so.
Okay.
For me, anyway.
Okay. All right. Are we, are we good consensus to send us back to staff?
Yes.
Eli? Yeah, quickly, Eli.
Since I'm a member of the board, I just felt like I needed to just defend this continuous statement that's being made in this community which is incorrect, that no action was taken by the board, that violations were ignored for over a year. Incorrect. If you need to bring Dr. Micalletti, our past chair at that time, you can. I have five pages here of what he documented, and that's what we submitted to the city. I, I took portions of that, we submitted that to the city. The board acted repeatedly, repeatedly during that several-month period that it's claimed that we didn't act. Unfortunately, the newspaper picked it up, and I know it had appeared in the complaint, but what appeared was from DHEF, or DHE, H, yeah, DFEH, yeah. What appeared was a complaint, okay? So it was one-sided. It, they were just saying sort of like the accusations, and, and then that's what was picked up. So, but the truth is, we were acting. I was part of it and spent a lot of time, as you would know, away from families and stuff, missing games and this and that, and dinners and so on, trying to address the situation. We took it very seriously. So just for the record, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
Okay. I think you have consensus from the council, Mr. Young, and appreciate the staff reaching out to RHS if, if you need to set up with a public, with a, a meeting specifically with, with RHS board, staff.
See you soon tonight, if Ron, I can try to sort of time this, before we leave, then when we can meet next.
Okay. And if I can be of any assistance with that, you know how to get ahold of me.
Sure.
Okay. Very good. We will, I think that that's, that completes our agenda. Mr. Young, do you have a city manager's report that you need to share with us?
Nothing.
Okay. Counselor, do you have anything you would like to report out this evening? Mr. Follman?
I attended the senior center board of directors meeting last week, and on Wednesday night at the Cultural Center, the Youth Training Academy is doing its annual showcase of things that the Youth Training Academy has done this past summer. That's six o'clock at the Cultural Center.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Greenow?
I had a Delnart Solid Waste Management Authority meeting on the 18th of July. We discussed the contamination of the recycling stream, ongoing issue that we're having. On July 21st, I attended the Delnart Veterans Memorial Monument groundbreaking ceremony, and it was a beautiful day for a very, very excellent occasion. They're starting phase one this month and in their project, and I'm looking forward to that coming to fruition. On July 24th, I attended a LAFCO meeting as well as a special city council meeting. And on July 26th, I attended a Harbor Two by Two by Two with the harbor and the county discussing different issues concerning the harbor. And on August 3rd through the 6th, I attended the Delnart County Fair, and that was a delightful weekend. That's all.
All right. Coach Member, you can't. Pro Tim Short?
Sir, I need to ask for a possible committee reassignment.
Okay.
With a conflict at work, the Delnart Marine Safety Committee that I'm on, I'm not going to be able to attend those meetings. If you wanted to possibly do a switch.
When is the, when, when does the Delnart Marine Safety Committee meet?
It's usually in the morning on the 3rd Wednesday of the month.
Third Wednesday.
10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Not me. I hear a not me.
I hear a whisper, a whisper of not me.
No.
Yeah. I, I work Tuesday nights.
Okay. Ms. Scott, would you please make note that, that the mayor will assign himself to the Delnart Marine Safety Committee and work with Pro Tim Short to get all the details for that, please? Okay. Anything else you want to report out?
Possibly trade something out.
Yeah, I'll have to-
We'll work that out at a later time, I guess.
I gave you something that we're both on already.
Thanks.
Okay.
I did have one more thing, though.
Yes, sir.
Do you still need a volunteer to represent the city with the League of Cities at the conference?
I do.
I will go.
All right.
If, if no one else would like to.
That's awesome. Okay, so, would you quit kicking that thing? League of Cities, that is the second week of September, and can we, can we appoint Mr. Greenow as our representative by consensus? Do we need a specific vote to, to do that, since he will represent the city as a voting member?
The league does require a resolution, so we'll have to bring a resolution back.
So would you prepare a resolution for our meeting on the 21st?
Sure.
Okay. And Mr. Greenow, would you connect with Ms. Scott? No. Okay. We will need to do it with City Hall to get your arrangements done ASAP, where you're going to be hoofing it all the way across Sacramento to get to the convention center. So if you could touch base with city staff first thing tomorrow, that would be appreciated.
Will do.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to report out?
I apologize for missing the last meeting. Stuff I had to report was before that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just hit it. The Delnart Solid Waste Management meeting, as Mr. Greenow pointed out, the Veterans Monument groundbreaking, which was something, obviously, that means a lot to me and appreciate this community. I will just, again, use my plug for that. I do believe that this community ought to be paying for the monument, not veterans. Do not think that it is, it is right to expect the veterans to raise their own money for their own monument. This community, if it truly honors veterans, as the sign says, this community needs to get behind this project and needs to pony up some cash to make this thing something that we can all be proud of. Okay, I'll skit off. Somebody told me I was a little edgy today. I guess you're right. I had several other meetings. One of the interesting meetings that I did have is, as Community Development Director, Eric Taylor and I went to Brookings and sat down with City Manager Gary Melman and one of the lieutenants from the Brookings Police Department to discuss with them the impacts of marijuana cannabis sales in their community. I have to say that I was expecting to hear horror stories. Instead, they did not enact any specific ordinances other than what the state had, and overall, they have had a very little impact, both from a law enforcement standpoint, which is interesting and certainly provides some interesting conversation for us moving Chamber board meeting and missed the fair this year for the first time since I've been here, but had other family things that I needed to take care of. All right. Anything else? All right, we are adjourned to August 21st. Thank you for being here. We're adjourned to the August 18th workshop. I'm sorry. Thank you.